I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation and a God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next we come to the adoption of the agenda. We have a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? All right, the agenda is adopted. Now we come to our work session. The first item is the Fellow's Property follow-up. Dr. Jones.
As you remember, at our last meeting, we actually presented just kind of the concept for what would actually fit on the Fellow's property. And so I'll just kind of show you a few of the pictures we looked at last time as a reminder. We'll go all the way back to the beginning. What we did is we modeled one grade level study, a feasibility study, because the property is a challenging piece of land in that it has large changes in grading from, you know, one side to the other. It also has a tremendous amount of greenery, you know, and trees on the property. And so we put together a program that is based off the size, when you look at this program, that you would have in a kindergarten classroom. And the reason we did kindergarten is simply because of the room size. And that's why you see up here, it doesn't say kindergarten. But what we were trying to do is look at if we needed 12 classrooms, let's go with a bigger classroom so that in the future you have more flexibility to either have more classrooms that are smaller or have the largest classrooms we have in the district, which is kindergarten. So that's where this program comes from, and it is set with that number of 12 classrooms like we've been using at Mount Daniel long-term. So in order to get the one grade level solution to fit on the property, the Luke Meyer Architecture Firm and Greg Luke Meyer actually did the work for us, actually modeled three different versions, and, you know, was able to determine, which was the first big question, can we put a grade level center, will it fit on the property? And you'll notice there are lots of trees on here, where you can kind of see it on here, where that plus, right next to that plus 320, there's actually a big, big tree there that must be maintained, you can maybe see it a little bit better here, that can't be cut down. And it just so happens, of course, it's like almost in the middle of the property. So, and by law, that tree must remain. And so they have modeled all three of the versions around that tree, and then also maintaining, you know, as much greenery as you can on the land. So the first big question, first of all, was can it be done? The answer was yes. What are some of the constraints? The constraints have to do with the different grades in the land, and also especially that one particular tree. And they were able to look at strategies that coped with both of those. This is a version where it's taller, it's actually a three-story version, and so it makes it look narrower, you know, looking from Oak Street. But again, it's working with the grading in the land. And this is another version where you're looking at it from the side, and you can see where they're actually cutting into the land here. You can actually have your mechanical where it's almost underground on the side street. So probably the solution that if you were definitely going to have smaller children, it probably would be the first one, which is two-story instead of three. It would also be not quite as large, you know, sitting in the neighborhood. The big question, so when you look at, you've got option A, option B, and option C, and again, these are just letting us know what can be done at a very conceptual basis. What I'm really needing guidance on from the school board is the fact that we had this in our CIP, in our capital improvements planning, for land acquisition, and it's at $4 million. When that went through the CIP process, they ended up putting it on the city side, but it was the school board request.
General government side?
General government. And the request was to acquire property, and specifically thinking about this property. And it is sitting on the general government side where the funding is there, and so I really need the direction from the school board. Now that we know what will fit there, we know what the capacity is, is that something that we are wanting to move forward with? Because the next step, I would need to get a land assessment, and there's, you know, a dollar cost to that. It would be around $10,000, maybe a little less, maybe a little more. But we need to get that done kind of ASAP if we're going to move forward on the land. And it's really getting direction from the school board, knowing what will fit here now, having a better understanding of the property, is that what we want to do? We are also under a time crunch because the property is already going through that zoning, you know, the process on the general government side and the zoning office. And I have reached out to John Boyle and then also Jim Snyder to give just some general guidance on what comes next, because it's hard for us to know what's happening. We have a couple of months before it could be at a very different point in time in that they need to submit a grading plan. But John Boyle has said that they actually could start selling the lot off, the lots off, and then you could take one lot and start pushing that through as well. So we really are under a time crunch to either make a decision to say, yes, this is something that the school board really wants to do, and we want to, you know, move forward with a condemnation process, or not, on this piece of property, knowing that we're going to need future property in the city of Falls Church. We know that, and we know how difficult it is to build outside city limits. And, you know, five years ago, we were still willing to look a mile, mile and a half radius outside of city limits. I'm not sure with what we've seen with Mount Daniel that this school board would support that thinking any longer, that we would want to be building in Fairfax County again. So that's kind of where we are on this property. But the next thing I need to do is, it would be to get the assessment, and we really need to, you know, have a clear voice to the general government that, yes, we want to move forward.
Thoughts?
And I might ask, Tom, I don't want to put you on the spot, but because we've worked on this, you might talk about the process a little bit, because one of the issues I know in the city, just from, you know, reading general comments that people are watching them at the meetings, people are afraid that there would not be a fair value that's, you know, given for the land, that what condemnation actually means, and here it's not actually called condemnation, right? Or did, yeah, it is. Yeah, it is. I mean, domain other places. There we go. So anyway, if you don't mind, just...
No, I don't mind at all. The concept of value can be determined at two different points in the process. Of course, the first is that the general government and/or the school board would make an offer for purchase, which may or may not be accepted. That's the first opportunity to declare fair value, and in that case, it's decided by the property owner whether they deem it to be fair or not. The second would occur after the intention of taking has been declared by the public body, at which point it would be decided by a court. So fair value is something that both sides would litigate. It's based essentially on independent appraisals provided by the public body, the property owner would have an opportunity to provide their own, and it's decided essentially and entirely by the court. So whether or not the court comes out with a value that could be obtained on an open market is not for us to know, but that's essentially what they attempt to do, is what is the open market value or fair value of the property being taken. And in this case, it's a little easier than other cases in that you're taking an entire property. Easements and things like that are more difficult for courts to decide. What is the value of taking a small piece of a property or permanently providing an encumbrance across the back path of a property is a little more challenging. These cases are relatively easy for a judge to decide.
But I guess to make it a more pointed question, the purpose of this exercise is to compensate the landowner fairly, correct?
That's correct.
So it's not as if the landowner is worse off than he or she would have been. I mean, the idea is fair compensation.
Right, and I think that is where the opponents and the criticisms of the condemnation process would argue that you can always achieve more on the open market because you can always say no to a value you don't think meets your personal preference, right? So the property owner has in their mind that this is all I'll take, and if I don't get this, I won't sell it. They don't have that opportunity once a condemnation proceeding starts, they'll have to accept the number that's generated by the court.
Well, but that also applies to us. If the court decided that our offer was low...
That's correct.
And we had a higher, they had a higher number, then we would have to accept a higher price than we had originally offered.
That's correct.
So it's, I mean, it's a fair value, and it, you know, potentially cuts both ways.
So with that in place, questions, thoughts?
I mean, I've looked at this land for years, like everybody has, and I think we need to proceed. My biggest question is, the city keeps saying, stop it, the city keeps saying, you know, well, the owner, she doesn't like us, and I mean, have they made any attempt to even approach? I mean, this has been in the public, so it's not like they don't know. Have they approached even in an informal way? And I'm sorry I missed the last meeting, but...
I think that, you know, through the years, we have, it's at a different point in time now in that there isn't anybody living on the property. The property has gone, you know, through, it's just starting that planning phase where it has subdivided into seven lots. We know that it's going to be, you know, on the market, and so what we haven't done is be able to start the actual process, first of all, paying for the assessment so we know today, you know, what the value of the land is. And we have done previous assessments there. We've kind of done that over the last couple of years, just so we were well-informed, but we need a current one for today. And then make an offer. And I think that that's what we would be asking general government to do, to say, that's where we need to start formally to do that. And we would, you know, have an attorney that would work on that for us, obviously.
Other questions, Ms. Ward?
I just think, I mean, as long as we're being fair to the homeowner and we're proceeding in the right manner and the right step, you know, step by step, I would like to go forward, mainly because, like Dr. Jones said earlier, there is nowhere else in the city to build schools, and we are getting...
Well, Madison Park?
Is that in the city? I thought that was...
Absolutely.
No, 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 that's over off of...
Oh, Madison, oh, Madison behind, like Parker over that way, Parker and West.
Lawton, Sunrise.
On the tree.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
On the cherry area.
Yeah, well, I mean, the point is, any of the land is park, which is really either park or developed in some way. This is unique.
Right, it's...
I will say something about Madison Park, though, that's surrounded by homes, right? On all sides. If it's a park I'm thinking of...
I mean, as is this land.
No, 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 I mean, there's no street, direct street access to it, there's a driveway...
No, no, that's Robert's Park.
It's Robert's, okay, then I'm thinking of something.
If you go down, like, uh...
Oh, 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 behind Sunrise, okay, okay, yeah, yeah, all right. So what would happen, like, that's a big soccer field, right? We use that a lot. What would happen to our little soccer teams? Where would they play?
Well, I think that's one of those questions. You wouldn't want to just assume what you would have to do on Madison is exactly what we've done on Fellow's, you'd have to model that. Because what we've done here, I mean, if you look at option A, B, or C, there's a lot of green space left there. I mean, these are kind of giving you, if you don't want seven houses there, that, you know, where the houses in and around there don't really have any green space, with all three of these, you're actually leaving quite a bit of green space and trees. It's kind of the blend of a facility is there, but you also have lovely green space that's there still for the houses that live around there. Madison, could that very well be an existing field or reorient a field and have a compacted school? Highly likely, but you wouldn't know until somebody models that for us, just to be sure.
Well, and Madison has been razed before.
Yes.
And the neighbors went crazy, and the council backed down, so I don't see that changing.
Yeah, and I think when they razed it before, and this was pre-me as well, I wasn't here, so I do know they were looking at taking the entire property. So, you know, the people that live in and around there, I have no idea. Anytime you build in someone's neighborhood, they don't like it. So, I mean, that's kind of par for the course, it's always difficult. But if you were able to leave a soccer field and have a school, that was a one-grade level solution, which is different than we've talked about in the past. I know even when we looked at it when we were expanding from Mount Daniel, it was can you get a K-12 there? But it meant maxing out Madison. So that, I mean, it's a good question, I don't know the answer, but you'd have to model on that property to see, could a field remain with a one-grade level solution? And that would actually give you that $4 million, that minimum, $4 million or whatever, that you're going to spend on land to actually invest in the building, so...
I don't know, the only other option I saw, is the community center, and moving the community center to the high school property? If we were, you know, I don't know if we could work with general government to do a pool, combine community center, or something with commercial aspect to it up there, and take the community center and expand it a little bit and make that into an elementary school. There are already small classrooms, it's fairly underused for the classroom space, there's already a gym. So it's just something that, as I was walking around the other day, thinking about it.
Yeah, the only thing we've modeled on City Hall before was actually when they looked at moving City Hall and to actually one of the new developments, and, you know, building it into one of the newer developments and taking over that ground space. We have not, to my knowledge, talked about taking over like the community center and moving the community center component. I would imagine the challenge with that, it's like anything else, you're still going to have to go in the community center and renovate.
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
Yeah, for school. And then you're going to have to have new funding to build the community center. So I guess it's kind of that, we'd have to do a cost analysis to see if it's actually more cost-effective to renovate and build new versus acquiring land and building a grade-level center.
What are the projections for preschool? Would it be possible to do one and a half grade levels on the Fellow's property?
And...
And put half the preschool there?
You mean our existing preschool right now?
Yeah. I mean, if you're looking ahead to the future, are we confident the preschool will be adequate? Could you do some, I mean, the thing that troubles me with respect to these proposals is it is one grade level. And is there, could you do a grade level plus something else?
Well, you...
Could you put the central office there?
If you didn't, well, there are lots of pros and cons. If you didn't do kindergarten, and you went, if you're looking at a classroom size of 850 square feet instead of 1,100, you're going to fit more spaces on there, but then it depends what grade level are you talking about? Because if you go to an upper grade, then you need all those other ancillary things like additional gyms and the big spaces for big kids, you know, so it would be a challenge. You probably could do, if you weren't doing kindergarten, you might be able to do like a first-grade center, but then you're kind of in a weird, having kindergarten somewhere and like second grade somewhere else, assuming Mount Daniel moved forward.
Could you put second grade there, and then they walk across, you know, just like at a private school, there's multiple buildings, so that they walk across the street to use the gym when they need to use the gym, and they...
In long-term, you'll pose different challenges, and it's going to be because there is literally one gym and one cafeteria, and even though we've expanded that cafeteria, it is not a cafeteria that would be a great cafeteria for that many students. I mean, that's one of the reasons we've got, we need to move second grade out. You just, getting all of those children to rotate through a gym and have adequate PE and instructional, where in kindergarten, your multipurpose room actually handles that, it's the same size as the Mount Daniel one. It'd be a little bit smaller as they start getting into second grade. Doesn't mean you couldn't do it, but it would be pretty, it'd be pretty tight, and the media center kind of space is smaller, just because they're little, so tiny. And really, the grade, I mean, there are lots of different ways you could configure it. And truthfully, when you ask the preschool question, I mean, it may never happen in Virginia, but I cannot imagine that in the next decade or so, that early childhood, as in pre-K, is not going to become universal pre-K. I mean, states all across the United States have already done that, and when that happens, that's a totally different ballgame, because where we've built a preschool for, you know, 90 children, now you're talking about needing 200 some odd, because most parents will enroll their preschooler, and I went through this in my previous district, when you're paying daycare and those expenses, they will all take advantage of preschool. So that would just, it would need a totally different solution for preschool if that happens.
Well, I agree with Margaret, I think we should proceed, because I just see this as the most likely solution for us, near term. I mean, the idea of the community center is an intriguing one. If we were closer on the high school to reality, you know, that would be one I think worth looking into, but it's in a high school at this point.
And I agree, I think we should just go ahead and move forward, at least to get the ball rolling so that we don't, again, lose time and opportunity to kind of get to see where we are. But Aaron's talk about the community center, I think at least warrants maybe a conversation with the general government to see if that option is, at least talk to them and see where they are, because that's actually the first I've, I've...
I mean, it just, it doesn't seem to meet the needs of our community anymore.
I've never even thought about potentially that, that one.
Maybe so, you've kind of outgrown that community center, and so when I thought, what do you do with the community center, you've kind of outgrown. It's already got classrooms, it's already got a gym.
Yeah, it's just a matter of, I think, or John's talking about, is coming up with the funding potentially to move it somewhere else, even though I know everyone talks about the swimming pool part of it, but it's coming up with the funding to do that and move it.
I think that gym is used a lot, isn't it?
That is, that is, the consequences of that would mean...
No, just the gym.
Bonding the entire cost of the high school.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
No development, which maybe is what we want to do, but I think...
Put it in a commercial development.
What?
You'll put it in a commercial development. It could be, like, City Hall is going to be part of a commercial development, the community center could also be part of a...
Yeah, but like four floors over it.
Commercial development, yeah.
I like, I like your idea, Aaron, particularly because when you think about the community center and maybe, like, I mean, that's, you know, that's probably way down the road, but it could be used as, we could use auxiliary, have the community center gym be an auxiliary gym, possibly maybe have a pool. I just don't know if that would happen right away, but I like that Lawrence said maybe that would require a conversation with the general government and see how they feel about it, see what, you know, kind of cost that would entail. But, you know, as far, like, as far as, you know, right now, this property right here, I think we need to move forward. I mean, we just need to, we need to know what we're facing. I mean, how are we going to, like, we could sit here and speculate all day long, and so we actually have numbers in front of us.
I think we have to get some numbers.
We really have to move forward. And I think the same with Madison, I, you know, it'd be nice to get some numbers on that property as well, just so we have something to compare.
Even though there's not a perfect to this, because both locations, I think, will come with controversy in the community, because it's already, as rare as it has, definitely, I know for Madison, it's come up before, and the neighbors are not very thrilled about that, but you're hearing it more now about the, and I think it's because some folks are thinking if we go through the condemnation process with the Fellow's property, that the family is not going to get fair market value, which isn't the case. But I think that's kind of the confusion of that part of it, it's just they don't fully understand that piece that we have to at minimal give, whatever the fair market value is. And sometimes the courts could go higher than what we may even thought so, there's still a little bit of, they're not going to walk away with less than fair market value of the property. But I think we need to go ahead and just at least look at it. And to answer your question before, I know the general government folks have talked with the family, I think it's several years ago, and came back of just the big worm.
Well, yeah, no, it was a non-starter, but, you know, you get to a point where you need to do more than talk. You need to pretty much say, okay, we're going to give you an offer, and then we'll start the process, because otherwise, they don't have to deal with us, really.
And I think part of the challenge in the past is we didn't have any funding, and so it's very difficult to make a real offer when we didn't have any, anything in the CIP, where now, this is the first year where it's actually been, you know, it's in the CIP, so there is $4 million there to actually work with to acquire property for the first time, but it's sitting on the general government side now, although it's a school board request.
Well, I think the general sense is that we should proceed. I guess my big question would be, are we making enough use of the synergy with TJ? And I think we need to be mindful of that, that you've got these two properties separated by Oak Street, what can you do to maximize the value? And is kindergarten the best value? And how you sequence all these things and juxtapose them and have people use facilities across the street? You know, can you, can you make greater recreational use out of some of the green space that would open up opportunities on the TJ property? I don't know, but if we, if we consider the Fellow's property in isolation, I think we'll shortchange ourselves.
And I think it's really important to keep in mind, I think those are all great points, that all we've done is model, this is very, very basic. And so, you know, where you end up, you know, five years from now or seven years from now, when you, if we actually are needing at that point where growth is ready, you're going to open all of those doors to, you know, competition for people to compete. And it is highly likely that they may want to do a wing where the trailers are sitting, and it's, you know, a school within a school concept, that's totally different, because that's about the only space you have right there until you get into the floodplain, which can only be parking, it can't be building. And that's another kind of thought process about Fellow's, is that, let's say you emulate and do a whole nother wing and attach it where there's more synergy, just in the functionality of the building, then you're going to have to have parking. And the city, the general government, was very clear, even two years ago when we talked about this, that they did not want to pay $4 million and see a parking lot, even if it was, you know, lots of green space and still felt like a park with parking, that maybe this day in time and five years from now, that thought process will be different. So all of those doors would be open. I think the big question really was just can you fit a grade-level center on there? Because we've got a grade-level issue, we know, long-term, just with the growth. And I think you guys all saw my note this week, we're setting at about 4.6% growth this year, assuming that that doesn't change in the next two weeks where a lot of kids moved out that we didn't, we didn't realize, but...
But I guess if we could, and it sounds as if, again, the notion is proceed, but...
Yeah.
Can we proceed with some pushing of the boundaries? Like, could we say, can you do a grade level plus central office? Can you do additional synergies with, what, how far can you, you know, can you do, heck, could you do a bridge between, across Oak Street so you don't have to close Oak Street? How opportunistic can we be about this? Because this is a notional, this is, I think, a baseline, but I think the question is, what additional value can we get over and above that? So...
Well, I'm also looking at it as another stormwater project, too, because the way you've got everything situated, you're really dealing with the highest part of the ground, and at that public meeting over at TJ, the neighbors were really concerned about runoff, and if you have seven houses with, you know, a bunch of sidewalks and driveways, and, you know, there's going to be a whole lot more runoff than if you do like we did over at Thackeray, where, you know, you put in a huge amount of stormwater retention. And I think that's, you know, potentially huge for us and for the neighbors and the general government, because coming straight down from the left and...
But I think, I also think at this point, and Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, but we do have to have some sort of concept of what we're going to put there as far as it being a school, and so this would meet that. It doesn't mean when we get into construction, we can't change anything.
Yeah, the requirement of the public body is that you have a confirmed legitimate public use, not an idea that you might someday do something there. Clearly met that threshold, but the plans that you use to generate the validation of your public use are not locked into future building of that plan.
I also think, you know, if we proceed with this, we somehow need to disseminate to the public and on a broader level that what we're doing is fair and upfront and honest, and we're not stealing from anyone, and we're not being bad neighbors. So I don't know how we'll go about that, but we definitely need to let the public at large know. I think we need to be more vocal in our reasoning for things and provide facts for backing up our decision.
Yeah, that we're getting it at a fair price to do something that's thought about ahead of time, as opposed to taking it for nothing and then we'll figure it out later.
Yeah, and I don't know if that's something we should, you know, we should write an article for the news press, or someone else should write an article for the news press, or somebody, you know, put it on our, you know, our Dale, on our website. All, you know, daily announcements or all of the above. But I definitely think we have to let the public know before, because it, it could cause a lot of problems down the road that we don't really need right now, so.
Well, and I think there's been kind of this perception that it's been kind of sneaky on the general government, like, and I think that's really kind of unfair in the sense that, because we were very straightforward with it, even just having it in the CIP and for land acquisition. So I'm not sure that the message has been out there, just because people don't always watch all the meetings and get to see all those discussions.
I just think that, that's why I think we should, like, here it is, people. This is what we're doing. This is why we're doing it. This is, this is how it's going to work. And I just don't know what the, the best vehicle or vehicles is for that. I know the news press is always a wonderful vehicle for that kind of thing, but not everybody reads it or, you know. So we, it's just, the, the best, I don't know, whatever the best way is to get that information out to the general public, I'd like to see happen. The same.
Okay. So what, what is your time horizon for next steps?
If I'm hearing the direction tonight is to move forward with the assessment, I'll get it started tomorrow.
Okay. And you'll get back to us how quickly?
Generally, the assessment usually takes a couple of weeks unless they're busy, busy, busy. So I would say three weeks. It's three weeks, no longer than four usually.
And, and in that time, is it possible to do any additional modeling consideration about?
We can.
What else is possible?
The only thing that I, I would suggest is that we wait and do that when we're closer to moving forward with the project. I only say that because we have modeling from 2009 that actually, it, it looks kind of different the way they did the concepts, but it actually does kind of close the street and connected the building. And that, that's where a lot of that thinking in town came from, was back in the Dewberry study in 2009. So we have that and the thinking is there. We know the utilities all run under the street and, you know, because of some of the prior work. It's just, it's all money. I mean, we can model over and over, but you're going to spend probably $10,000 or $15,000 to go back and, you know, connect again to get a different concept. So at this point, if we think that we really are moving forward, the school board wants to, you know, move forward on the property, I, I would suggest that we pay for the assessment, because we will have expenses going through condemnation that we're going to want that funding for.
Okay.
Can you clarify for me on Madison? Is that something we would even want to model on? Or can we either put it to rest or say, yes, that's something we want to look at, community center? Do we want to model, how much would it cost to renovate, you know, a community center into a school? Just so that I know what it is the board wants me to do.
And the community center, I could think of that as like a more long-term, you know, solution. Like, if we're thinking more holistically in the city, if we're going to continue to have enrollment pressures, we're going to continue to build apartments, we're going to have more kids moving in, our preschool could conceivably triple in size. You know, just having multiple options for things, even if that's a 10 years from now thing where that moves up to the high school property. Just, you know, again, because all this takes so long, starting the conversation with general government now about is this something we could work together on and realize some synergies between the city and the schools at that property? So I don't think it's worth modeling it right now. It was not the money.
I, I agree. I, I definitely like this idea. And I, I think, but it's something that I, I think it's separate and distinct from this, from Madison and, and the area on, on Oak. But I'd like for, at some point, for us to explore the community center for future prop, the property for future school development and, you know, just open this, open that conversation up with city government. Because I, I think it's such an excellent idea. I really, not for, like I said, for, you know, future, in the future, when we know we're going to keep growing and there might be mandated preschool and we're going to be really stuck holding the bag.
Be a great building for a preschool, actually.
I know.
Yeah.
Madison?
Madison, I'm a little less inclined to do, to move forward there. But with the potential of the community center, I'm, I'm definitely more open to that. Potentially not right at this very moment, but at least know possibility of somewhere else that we could look to potentially expand down the road. Because those pressures are going to continue to come as, you know, have one open, new apartment building opening now, one coming up in a couple of months. And haven't even broke, really broke ground across, right up the street here yet. So I think those pressures are coming. So just at least as a board, kind of have in the back of our mind that there's a potential another site in the city to potentially look at.
It says it gives us a little peace of mind. We can sleep at night.
But, but, okay, a couple of things. I mean, I think if you're going to look at your options, I think you should look at all of them. I think I would not discount opposition in the community center neighborhood.
Well, not at all either.
I mean, I think the Madison, First Madison used to be a school. It's flat as a pancake. Probably a lot you can do there. I think we at least owe it to ourselves to say what, what is possible there. And we're not going to do anything, but, you know, the, the community center is an existing use that would have to be substituted for. So you're not, everything's a trade-off. So how exhaustively should we look at alternatives?
Well, we're thinking the community center down the road, not for this particular, not for this particular school that we're talking about. I do, I, I don't know if we, we look into Madison. I mean, it would be nice to be able to compare, but I don't want, you know, that to prevent us from acquiring the property on Oak Street either. If we, if that's going to cause delay.
Well, if you were looking at Madison, we would be modeling Madison at the same time we're doing the assessment and you'd have both of them.
Okay.
You're committing to the assessment and you'd be committing to modeling, but you'd want to do it quickly if that's something that you're seriously comparing, land that the city has versus acquiring property.
I mean, it would be nice to have those numbers in front of us and, and really get a, get an idea of what everything's going to cost in the, you know, get the bottom line. I, as long as it doesn't prevent us from, you know, getting the Oak Street property, I'd like to see what, you know, what it would, what the cost would be for Madison and what. The only, and the other thing I like about Madison is that if we put our kindergarten over there, it's over by the preschool too. And I just thought that would be kind of nice to have them grouped together, blocks of each other.
And this opens up other things. I mean, there, there are commercial properties that right now are, are available for some use. There are examples of schools that, that have been put in formerly commercial office buildings. Is that something we want to consider as well?
Yeah. And I'm trying to think when I, at some point, I think I, oh, I know what it was when we were looking for rents. There was all that information that was on board docs earlier during the budget. If you go back and look at those, it does have the prices of some of the office buildings. You'd still have to kind of go into retro and, and do work, but, I mean, that's always an option. It's usually play space that's harder than an office building. It's, you know, because you've got to have parking and then they don't tend to have the, the green space, but.
I've been to one of those.
But it's very, I mean, in, in, for an urban environment, I mean, it's doable, but you've got to be able to find the right building.
I, I just, I'm not a big fan of the schools. I could see if you absolutely have to have one. I've been to one in DC and it was okay. But their play spaces were like basically, you know, parking decks with astroturf, not even astroturf, that plastic stuff, green, and grass, grassy stuff. And it was dark.
There's no grass next door.
It was dark.
I will, I will say, I, I have been a principal in a building, urban environment in Sydney, where we actually had turf. We didn't have any grass because it, it was also the walkway where everybody was going to their cars and everything, but it was lovely. I mean, there was still a tree in the middle of it. And it was green, so it looked beautiful and green all year long. It really was lovely. I mean, I wouldn't have thought that if I hadn't had that experience. It was outside.
Yeah. So I, what I've seen, like, this is like, there's no sun. I mean, the sun comes in maybe at a slant, but it's dark. They have to be lit. I mean, the one I was in, I don't know, maybe they could figure something else out, but I just, I'm not, I, I feel like we are still suburbia. And I don't feel like that we really have to, you know, put our schools in high rises at this, at this juncture. And I prefer not to see kindergarteners in a high rise. I just, that's just my personal opinion. So I'm just saying.
Other thoughts?
I mean, if we want to raise Madison, I just think it's been asked, it's been fought, and the answer was no, so.
Well, I mean, this is all a zero-sum exercise. So I think some of the question is how much due diligence do we want to exercise? I mean, if we're really sure that some things are non-starters, then that's fine. But I think, you know, it, it's, it's not as if we've got a whole lot of options here. And the fact that historically there was a huge contraction in land for the, for the schools, such as Madison and other properties as well, you know, we're now paying the price for that contraction. The question is, how exhaustively do we look for alternatives? And, you know, how, what, what do we, what do we tell the citizens of Falls Church? This is how hard we've looked. I mean, do we want to assume or do we want to be fairly exhaustive in our search?
Haven't we been looking for some time now? And these are the only two options we were able to come up with. And the, the Oak Street option just opened up not that long ago. I mean, we, we've looked. We've been looking. This is not a new question. This is not a new issue. So I, I don't know of, I, I, I mean, we're two square miles. And I don't know if it's going to fall out of the sky.
I think where you're going to get the pushback, and I, I agree, we have been looking at numerous sites and it's just a matter of kind of getting the no's. I know for a while they were looking at the property over off of Hillwood. That's now the Avalon, that apartment complex over there. But I think where the pushback will come back now from some folks, and it kind of has already a little bit, that we have the property up at the high school property. So there, there will be some of that, that conversation too of, if you have that property, why not move something there?
And the answer is $130 million of bonds is expensive.
I, I fully agree, but I know that, that it will be and has already been conversation from folks in the city of, you have all this now property in the city, why don't you do something up there? I don't necessarily agree that's a great spot to do the, an elementary's school of moving Mount Daniel and places like that, if that were the case. But I know that's going to be one of the, the, the points that a lot of folks are going to make about that property up there.
Well, and I think at Mount Daniel, and again, we won't know until we really get through the next month or so. But when you talk about building a brand-new elementary, we're talking about 24-plus million. You know, and at Mount Daniel, where we have more than half of a building that, you know, is staying. So, I mean, it's a very cost-effective solution, long-term, which allows us to have other investments other places. But, so not only are you, wouldn't you not have any development up there, but your building costs would be huge. Yeah.
And also the timing, because we can't really start putting anything up there until we decide what we're doing with the high school. I mean, everything has to be built, I'm guessing, simultaneously or close to it. And we need this now, right? We need this building now.
Well, if we're talking about, you know, struggling to find money to build a new high school, now we want to build a new high school and an elementary? That doesn't sound very logical.
No, it doesn't. And that, that's a good.
So how much would it cost for some basic modeling for Madison?
We're probably going to pay between six and 10-ish. It'll be around, around in there. I, I need to look at the property to see how challenging it is. It may not be as challenging as this one. So I, I think it would be easier than this, but I just, you know, it'll be around $10,000 though, give or take, a couple, either direction.
Having been over there, it's probably a bit of an easier.
Yeah, I think, I think it is, but, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, to me, the challenge isn't the modeling or the land, it's the political will, and we can't model that. So, I mean, it seems like I'm the only one who really doesn't want to waste time or money on it, so.
Oh, no, no. I'm with you. I don't necessarily know if the political part of it is, if it's worth the spending of the money, because I've, I know it's going to be uphill, controversial to, to even do it. So I don't know if spending what sounds like not a lot of money to do the modeling, but I don't know where we would go from there.
I think we, I'm sorry.
No, I was going to say, it's really the difference between, say, give or take that 14 million and 10 million. And it's $4 million worth looking at, you know, Madison. That's really, that's really the question.
$4 million?
Yeah, because that's what you're going to pay. I mean, that's what we have in the CIP. Could be more than $4 million by the time we get through it, but, you know, we have $4 million to look at for land acquisition. So if you already own the property, that's, you're not acquiring land because you already own it in the city.
And, but I think, you know, also by, by looking at Madison and doing a due diligence and comparing costs and all of the other factors that go into it, then we can say we've done our job. I, I don't like assuming that it's not going to be feasible or assuming that, you know, we're going to have people saying we don't want a school here, whatever. There's, I, I, I just think, even if we don't go with Madison, I think we really need that. We need to say, and we need, act only to say, but we actually need to look at both and make the best decision on where to locate this school. I don't know. I know, I mean, we already own the property in Madison, so we have that going for us for, for future, right? But, and in order for us to get this property on Oak Street, we have to have, you know, plans for it. So it does put us in that predicament too. We decide that Madison is, is less feasible, but I know, I, I feel much better looking at both feasibility studies for both properties. Just because I think it's, I think it's a thing we should do. But then, I'm.
Other thoughts?
I don't have any else to raise.
I mean, it's politically unpalatable at either location. So in one case, we, we're exercising eminent domain, which is a very unpopular way to get land. And the other place, we're trying to build a school where people have already said we don't want a school. So, you know, it's all bad, but, you know, it sounds like we're going to, we may need both properties at the rate we're going. So, you know, I'm not convinced that we're not going to need another elementary on the Madison property as well as the Oak Street property. And when push comes to shove, it's, you know, what do you do? You gotta, you have to educate the kids. You've got to put them somewhere. So maybe we, we look at both now because we're already doing it and it's cheaper to look at it today than it is to look at it five years from now. So we just can get the plans.
Yeah, so that's a good point. And if we look at Madison today, a feasibility study, how long will that be viable, that kind of?
Well, unless somebody goes and digs a big hole or brings in a bunch of dirt and changes the elevation, that doesn't change.
Okay.
Yeah, so, and, so once you've done that kind of modeling, it just, it just sits there until you decide to do something with it or not. And it's like when we modeled on the City Hall, you know, it's, that's been really valuable. That was valuable information for us. And, and it did help the city. It was a very difficult discussion about are you willing to move City Hall into one of these new developments? And ultimately, the answer was no, we want to renovate and keep City Hall where it is in its historic site. But we actually knew then, we were looking for, you know, up to five acres for a K-12 site, and we couldn't find it. And so, I mean, it's, they're very informative.
I mean, if, to, to channel Mr. Riedinger, if we want to be data-driven, we should have data. So we can't just say, let's pretend these options don't exist. Let's be clear-eyed and let the citizens know what the options are. So my, my thought is maybe, maybe ones don't work, but if we can do Madison for $4 million less, then we can do the Fellows property and get 30% more space. I think the citizens need to know that.
Right. And I also think that, you know, it's not, it's, I mean, money is obviously a big factor, but we also have to consider, you know, the future of the school system, maybe not five years from now, maybe 10, maybe 20 years from now. If we don't get the Oak Street property now, you know, where are we going to be? So, I mean, that's a factor too. We, I mean, we should have everything on the table and, and really, really consider each and every factor for each property and not just the, the bottom line.
So what I'm hearing.
So I think I'm, I think it's fair to say that we should look at all of our options for the time being without making any decisions. Is that fair? And that way we'll have as much information as possible going into this so we can make the most informed decision.
Yeah, and I think that moving forward with the assessment, just keep in mind that you are really making a decision that we want to look at this property seriously, because when we get the assessment back, you've got to be ready to go because you're literally months away from, because it's in. months away from, because it's in, the land is in the process, and then you've missed the window. So I could, we can model on Madison, and that may be very informative, but you're going to have to be ready to make a very quick decision about, all right, we're going to have a discussion about which one of these.
Okay. All right, let's keep it moving along.
Okay.
Before we move on to our next discussion about our work plan, there are a couple of things that have been in the news in DC. Theodore Roosevelt High School was recently opened after $127 million renovation. That includes an Olympic-sized swimming pool, and it has a capacity of 1,100 students. So renovation, Olympic-sized swimming pool, $127 million, something, a data point to keep in mind. Another pool in DC just opened. The Ron Brown Middle School was a $58 million phased renovation with a capacity that is going to be eventually 500 to 600 students. So just numbers to keep in mind. I think these numbers suggest that the estimates that have been out there thus far are quite credible, and that unfortunately, it's not going to be materially cheaper than what has been estimated. I think we're going to need to do the due diligence to get a better sense of where the numbers are. But if you just look at what other jurisdictions are up to, that's relevant information.
It puts it in perspective. Thank you. Because I think a lot of citizens and even people on board, including myself, at times it'd be, is this a lot for a high school, or is this not a lot? So it's nice that you introduced those other numbers from a totally different jurisdiction, but it's close enough that, you know, it's comparable as far as, like, you know, the economy.
Well, and especially suggests renovation is expensive. So, you know, again, your mileage may vary, every site is different. But, all right, it is now 7:57. We're a little past schedule, but let's go to the next item on our work plan update.
Okay. Sorry, I need to be able to see what I'm clicking on. So there are several different attachments, and first of all, just going through the actual work plan, this is what we were working through this school year. When we look at Priority 1.0, if you see them in blue, those are things that we have completed. When you see things in yellow, that means that we're still working through those items. Like, for instance, our digital learning teams are very much engaged in looking at that three-year hardware refresh. We actually, we're just discussing that today with our leadership team. We're gearing up for our big advisory and tech advisory, and that will happen this year so that our staff are really weighing in on what they think is the best way to continue going forward. Do we want the same model, or will it look different?
Dr. Jones, can I just interrupt you? I think this is a good time to sort of do a level set. You know, the school board exists to do three things. We provide resources, we provide strategy, and we provide encouragement. We have a work plan that has 62 items on it. And this is the roadmap for what gets done in the next year. And, you know, on the one hand, 62 items, it's like, wow, that's, that's a lot of stuff. Is it really that complicated, or can't we just boil it down to do these three things? I think sometimes, there's a sense in some sectors of the community that there's too much that's being pushed out, and that some of that is contradictory. As we go through this exercise, I would invite you to look at it and figure out, are we asking the right things? Are we setting the right priorities? Are we asking too much? Are we asking too little? Are we too general? Are we too specific? Should we be asking for, you know, should our one thing be educate all the children up to the limits of their abilities? Is that a good work plan? On one hand, it is. On the other hand, maybe we need more specificity. Obviously, there are many children at many grade levels with many different needs, and we have to find a way to capture that. But as we go into this, again, 62 items is a lot. Maybe it's the right number, maybe it's not. But given that this is the roadmap that we're setting out for the next year, I think we need to look at it carefully, critically, reasonably, and realistically, so that whatever we come to agreement with for this next go-around is, you know, feasible, realistic, attainable, time-bound, all those smart things that you hear in the management consulting world. So I'm sorry for that digression, but Dr. Jones.
Well, and I think that these probably were in reverse order even on your agenda. I think it's good to remind the school board that this is what we'll be working on, the main thing that we work on with the school board first, is really looking at what are the priorities? And then, and that really is great guidance for us, because you have these components that the school board have set are very important, like 21st century teaching and learning, having excellent staff, monitored secure schools. So underneath each one of those, that's where the school board really sets what are the priorities? And really, what is it that then the staff have a work plan that's going to make all of these things happen? So this will be the next thing that the school board actually will work on. And so from those priorities last year, these are all of the work items. And what you'll see in yellow here is just, we just got our SOL final results, like, updated official, I should say, results. And so we're in the, we're in the process of getting all of those updated right now. So that's why this is in yellow. We want to report to the board, as we always do, about our progress.
Yeah, but I think you make a key point. I mean, our work plan as a board is this.
It's one page, yeah.
And this is how the staff says they're going to make this happen. So to a certain extent, I mean, we need to look and see, is our 62 things too much? But it's really, okay, if 62 things are too much, then what did we do wrong here that was either unclear or overly ambitious, as opposed to trying to micromanage how the staff say they're going to do what we said our intent was? I think it's, it's a bit different, because you said this is our work plan, and it's...
It's really not.
Ours, well, it's not ours as a board. It's ours as a collective, you know, leadership group. But it's really, I view this as ours, and something that we have to own. And think how it's going to get implemented, because if we do have something like this that looks and sounds reasonable, and it comes up with a, you know, 40-page document with 135 different things on it to be done within a nine-month period, then we kind of messed up.
Well, and I think, like, even in 21st century learning, if you look at the last bullet, you know, that was the school board direction, was to expand student access to STEAM disciplines, you know, and expand course offerings. But you didn't tell us exactly what that needed to look like. And Lisa and her team were able to work with members of the whole community and teachers to be able to roll out a full STEAM plan as part of our work. And it really allowed, I think, the professionals, and actually, parents in our community that work in the industry, to really help guide us in what we were going to offer. We've had phenomenal growth from there. I will say, I love having a work plan like this. I think my thing has always been, if the school board is going to add something, you need to take something off. It's about as robust as you want it to be. But I love it, because I keep it up on my wall. I check things off as we're getting them done, and it's a great check for us to make sure that we're meeting the priorities. Because I think in a lot of school districts, what you get is a lot of verbiage that just sits on the shelf, and you don't do anything with it. It's kind of like mission statements. You can go around and ask everybody what their mission statements are, and most people don't know. And they just, they don't know, because they don't really have a great deal of meaning other than the seven board members that decided to put it on paper. But it had, this to me translates to the staff, we really know what we're supposed to do. So for me, it's helpful.
I think it's, it really, you know, it breaks down in detail what our mission and vision statement is. And it does give a checklist. And when I read through this, it's not all the school board doing it, it's different departments that have their own little set of things to do. We just sort of monitor that, right? So it's not like we're doing all 62 items. We're monitoring. But I really like this, and I think it's very, it makes it clear, not just to Dr. Jones, for her little checklist, because I like checklists myself, but it also to staff, to know exactly what their, you know, what am I supposed to be doing? No one's spinning wheels. They go right to that and say, okay, so what we need to work on next? And people are together, they have the same mindset. I think this is a wonderful document.
Sorry, correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Schatz. Just from my own edification and for anyone else watching, you take our, you take the triennial plan, and you put together, you go through and you break it down into manageable steps, right?
Yeah. And then I bring it back to the school board.
The school board, right. So you, this is created by you, what you think works for you, for your staff, how you can implement the priorities in a concrete and measurable way.
Right. And it really is taking what the school board has shared, is the priority for the board in the discussions, as well as what's in print. And then working with staff, like Lisa, a lot of it's always curriculum, working with tech department, how can we actually bring these to fruition? And then we decide kind of what goes in and what goes out. And sometimes, something is in there that we really want, and I was thinking there was something with John Brett, actually, this year, for, and it's on here. We ended up taking it out and putting it back in, but it had a small cost to it, but just trying to get all the dead links off of our website and being able to hire that, because that was important. But we put it back in because we needed to make it happen. So the staff have a large role in each one of these. It just depends on what department, and like professional development, for instance, like Steve with our CERT, carries a huge role in this for professional development. So really, on most of these, we've made, we've made really good progress. We're pleased with where we are. This was refining the community-wide vision for the school of the future. I actually printed the community visioning, and then I actually hit print before I realized how thick it was. And I wasn't standing by the copier, and then I went in to get it, and I went, oh my goodness, I'm so glad I didn't do seven of these.
50% of our paper budget.
Well, I just normally wouldn't have printed it, but, and then I after...
You sold the entire year's paper budget.
That's a whole budget.
Well, and after I printed it, I told Marty, we really didn't need to put this on Board Docs either. It is already online, and it's available for the community. But just as a reminder, that that was a pretty big, we did two of these this year, big events. And where we also engaged our staff, and meeting with all of our staff and departments at the high school, and our students as well, which really did inform the high school program that we have. And it's important to remind people that, that we didn't just hire, like, Arcatast scope and a program together. It's had a lot of input from, you know, Tom's Department and Athletics, looking at what we need, you know, to make sure things are done correctly, to what are the 21st century spaces that we need. We want some rooms that open up to the outdoors. We want collaborative spaces, all of those things. So that section, we did really well on. This has to do with our authorization visits that we had this year. I did put those on Board Docs for you. You hadn't seen those before, we just got them. Actually, one of them, I think, I just got like last week. I just read it like yesterday. And hosting the diploma reauthorization visit for GM, I haven't seen anything official from that one yet. Sometimes they take a while to get them to us. We did our reauthorization for Mount Daniel and Thomas Jefferson. Mount Daniel actually was in a really good place there. TJ has some work to do on their report. They kind of dinged this a little bit for not moving forward, but enough. But keep in mind that in that five years from the first authorization to this visit, we moved an entire grade level back, who was in another building when they were authorized. So we, you know, we've, they didn't have those three years to actually, in preparation. And then we have been preparing for our NYPD authorization, and that's why it's in blue. They're doing all of the work for that, which will take place next December. And that one, we actually pushed back about a semester, just to give staff more time. So we did that last year. But we're on target for all of that. This has to do with making student growth, so that every grade level has at least a full-year academic growth. And I am going to click on one of these charts in here, because this is where we actually use Star Reading and Star Math, and let me find where I am here, to be able to look at how are our kids doing. And we didn't really realize how well our kids were doing, especially at TJ, until we really went in, and we update this each year. But what you're seeing is where we were in 2014, what you're seeing in blue, is where did our, like, second graders at the end of the year, where were they reading, you know, on their reading level? Well, they're above grade level, which is great, and they were making great growth. But if you look at what's in yellow now, and look at where our kids are ending the year, you'll see big differences. That's two years of benchmark literacy. And we, and I feel like, you know, the school board's always asking for data and why we do what we do. And our reading program and reading implementation has been a big effort, because we're very focused on reading, writing, speaking, and listening, and really making sure all of our classrooms are supported, and you're seeing it in the data. Huge growth. I mean, when you have fourth graders that are ending the year on a seventh-grade reading level, and that's your whole grade level, that's huge.
Are those averages, or?
What it does is it takes all students in the grade level, and actually looks at, what is the growth from the beginning of the year to the end of the year, and where did they end up? So like, to have two and a half years' growth, 1.2 years' growth, and the 1.2, this gets more difficult, because they ended the year at seventh grade. So it's tough to get a fourth grader now to ninth grade, for instance. So you'll see, this will level out a little bit right here. But when you look at where our kids are ending the year, and even to see this kind of growth, that's very difficult to do, to see fifth graders, who were already at almost a seventh-grade level, well, now they're at eighth grade. So we're seeing huge gains in reading, which is, which is good. I mean, that's why we've implemented Benchmark, and it's doing exactly what we were hoping it would do. And just as a reminder, with benchmark literacy, it's a framework for teachers, it's not a prescription. So every teacher uses it a little bit differently, but every classroom has the same books available. Every classroom has the same resources, which we've never had before. And then you'll see this in math, I just didn't highlight this, because we don't have a new math program like we did with benchmark literacy. But when you look at where our kids are ending on their math equivalency, again, I mean, they're just, they're doing really, really well. And we should be, you know, proud of the results that our teachers are getting with our kids. And you can see even growth here, again, when you start looking here, of what's happening with math. And we're in our, is it our fourth year of our new math curriculum from the state?
Yes.
So we're also getting better at really, you know, honing in on what kids need to be able to do. And Star Math and Star Reading are both norm-referenced assessments. They're not set by the state of Virginia, we don't create them. They've been norm-referenced with children from all over the United States, all different school populations, school populations with really high free and reduced, school populations that have no free and reduced students, also with urban environments, rural environments, small, medium, and large schools. So it has a huge data pool. So again, really pleased with how we were doing with our data. And you'll see more of this coming up when we actually bring the SOL results to you. Our ESOL audit was completed, they've been waiting on the scores, and we'll see that audit probably October, I think. She's got it, just as soon as she can update her report, or, because they want to include the SOL stuff.
It's a draft before final, so we're...
So we're just waiting on them, and they wanted to have our results before they would give us a final report, so. This is having to do with expanding assistive technology. We continue to try to get better at that. We have a really powerful device available for our students, and we're just, I still feel like we just barely scratched the surface for assistive technology and what we really can do for all children. And we continue to work on that. Our graduation rate is something, again, that we're really proud of, and you'll, we don't have the state final graduation rate. I'm hoping it's 100% again. We did graduate all of our students. So last year, they actually, we lost one, and we had to, they just couldn't correct it online. And it was a student who moved out of the division, and they didn't have the right code. And until you can find those kids, they count against you. And that was a student who had moved out at the beginning of the senior year. Gifted Plan is something Lisa did a lot of work with that committee this year on the Gifted Plan, a lot of input also on math. On increasing learning opportunities for all, extending class time and offering more flexible learning formats. Again, when you look at how many kids, over 300 students at Mason are enrolled in summer courses, we have expanded in a tremendous way. And we will continue, I think, to see growth in there. The other thing that's in there is the dual enrollment. And we didn't have really dual enrollment in 2011, 2012. We brought it in in 2012, 13, had about six, maybe seven students that were taking a science class. And this year, that number is around 200. So we're going to see that continue to expand. And of course, our AP and IB courses are, have been available and continue to grow. Probably AP Computer Science is the one where we've seen the most. Connecting the home and school for technology use, and we're continuing to make sure families that need internet access have it. We work with the foundation on that, continue to work on that this year. The dual enrollment program, again, that's having a pathway. Our goal is, this year is being able to have the certificate available, which is their first year through Northern Virginia Community College. The goal, long-term goal, is for the full associate's degree for those students who The goal, long-term goal, is for the full associate's degree for those students who want to be able to do that.
When do you think we'll see our first associate's degree?
Well, I would say, wow. I think it will take probably at least two years, maybe two and a half. I said two and a half because it could be that second semester. Part of it is our staffing. The way that our program is really growing and we're making it work is we believe we need our staff onsite. Our kids don't want to travel offsite, miss out on their high school experience. So we are hiring and staffing teachers who can teach high school and can also teach for Northern Virginia Community College. So, and our high C is also a component of that as well. All of our steam plants were implemented and we'll continue to do great work with those. Jump in if you want to say anything, I know we've got so much in here.
Well, actually, one thing, because you keep saying we're going to continue. I think one point to make here is just because something is in blue and, you know, in the front it says it's completed, doesn't mean it automatically goes away for the next year. Because there's a lot that just rolls over and it's, you know, you get to a certain point and then just keep doing it.
Yeah, this, if you look at the very beginning on that first front page, it's through FY '18. We'll continue. And so some of these were items that you can complete, but a lot of them, like the ones we were just looking at, are ones that we'll continue. Even like steam plan goes through 2018, we want to continue every year to do more there. Looking at excellent staff, tracking data between schools and applying the performance rubric. This kind of goes back to what we were talking about at our last meeting where we, this, for the first time this year, with our teachers who have been with us longer than three years, we're using goal setting as their interim evaluation instead of doing the full formal evaluation. And the principals have done a really good job, I'm going to bring up the other chart here. So when you look back in 2011, 12, just to give you a little bit of the history, that was when we brought the committee together and started looking at what do we want our committee to look like? You know, what do we want the evaluation to look like? It was the first year we actually had four, the four levels like this, which we knew the state was going to be rolling out. That was a big change for us because we had been pretty much a satisfactory, unsatisfactory kind of rubric. So you'll see like how many exemplaries and proficient we were, they're kind of all over the place. The seven standards came in here, this was year one after the teachers worked on it. And again, it's, it was trying to get some sense of consistency in exemplary and proficient as a district. How many, what is the percentage that's reasonable, what's not reasonable? There's year two and year three and 14, 15. And what you'll see is they start getting more consistent. And we had a lot of discussions as a principal team about, you know, what is the percentage truly in a building of teachers that are exemplary? And trying to have some real conversations about, we have a lot of fantastic, great, great teachers. But that doesn't mean they're all exemplary. And the teachers wanted to have that conversation. And back in 2011 and 12, they were pretty strong about if you're, if you're a rock star teacher, sometimes it's frustrating that you don't feel like you actually get that feedback where you're, you know, you know that you're really above and beyond. We've got it to the point now, in year four, you'll see again, three of our buildings are extremely consistent. And this is where we really want to be. This building has always been shifted in the other direction with more exemplary than proficient. But the other thing is it's very tiny staff and they've had a fairly stable staff that have been there for years. And so they, we think that that is an accurate reflection. So it's good to see the data. And then you'll see, one of the things we'll have people say, oh, well, there's so many teachers on a plan for improvement, there's a ton, there really is not. But teachers who are struggling or need that extra guidance are on a plan to be able to give them a plan of assistance to help them grow and get better. But it is very small. And if you go back and look at the first year, you'll see like unsatisfactories were pretty much nonexistent. This was the first year where we actually had some needs improvements. And again, it was the first year of the rubric when we were just actually using these four levels. So we've done a lot of work to have consistency, which is interesting because on the teacher survey, that, I don't know if you remember, but that's one of the things where teachers want it to be more consistent. But generally what that means is there's, I'm a proficient and I really think I should be exemplary. That's generally the conversation that, would you agree with that, Lisa? Yeah. And it'll be interesting, I don't think it's going to change this year when the teachers come back together, but I may be wrong. Because teachers want to know why they get the rating that they have. And having five or six indicators to have an exemplary or proficient, I don't think they're going to want to do away with those. Because what they didn't want was just to have, you have to have those ratings because the state says we have to. So if you don't have any indicators, that's just the opinion of a principal and then they just tell them why. But the indicators let them know ahead of time what the expectation will be. Lining compensation, again, that's something we should be really proud of. We have closed the gap on teacher pay. That was something we really set out to do and the board has done that. And hopefully next year, we'll be able to just, you know, continue with more of a, I'm going to say a normal budget year for salary, which will be fantastic. And some of those closures have been enormous, percentages and dollar amounts. The teacher turnover data, you guys had a chart on that during the budget as well, so that's online. Distinguished Scholar Program.
Did we have that one this year, did we have, we had one?
We had.
I think we had one, yeah, two. And it's not because we were highly selective, it's just that's what we had apply. National Boards, sorry.
But it's gone for next year.
Okay, I was going to say, didn't both of these get hit with the budget?
Yeah. For the budget, so it's not there next year.
Modern and Secure Schools, we never got to the referendum documents for the GMMEH. We had timelines and all kinds of things ready to go had we been there, but, so I put that in yellow. The referendum scheduled timeline, it was out there, it was done. But of course, it'll have to be redone and redone and redone depending on, you know, when that happens. We did do our request for proposal, we were ready for our detailed, I just marked it off in blue because we got as far as we could. We could keep that in yellow because we're still going to have to come back and do it. But we did, where, what where we were able to be by December is what we were able to do. Mount Daniel Construction Completion, obviously that's still in yellow. We were really hoping that maybe that would be, I don't know if you guys remember, we had a lot of discussion last summer about how to word that in here. Because we were afraid it may not be completed. Our Elwell and Cooper projections were updated, which we've been doing those annually in October. We've added contracted security at Jesse Thackeray this year, we did not have that previously. We also, we had in here to increase our security at Mount Daniel, we had it increased to start the school year. But once I realized we were not under construction, because it was for construction, we did an adjustment, and as you know, by the end of the year, we had an additional one at TJ. Because of some of the outdoor and just the size of the buildings, we ended up moving that position. And it'll come back to Mount Daniel when we know that it's needed. This has to do with our IT assessment, we did spend a whole work session on that. Establishing the risk mitigation plan, that's where we are right now. That's going to need to be, to be worked on over this next year, which was 2017. Readiness for Learning, I know I had a question on this one today. This has been really important to the school board over the last several years. And adding the summer lunches, we're in our, I want to say third summer, this was our third year where we actually feed all of our children lunch in the summer. And we're in also the weekend meals. I think we're in our third year, maybe fourth year for weekend meals. And that's any family that requests a box to be able to go home, that we make sure that they have food so that family and their, so families and their children are not hungry. I'm going to bring up that just so you can see. So when you look at the weekend meals and backpack program, the big difference here, and I think it was John, you emailed me about this, like, why is that number so low all of a sudden? Because originally it was 1,200. It's all based on how many families are in need. And it's open to any family, they literally just pick it up on Friday and it goes home with them. This year, we only had three families. And I don't know if that's because we're just doing a better job of providing in other ways or if we are not messaging where families just, you know, aren't, I don't know. We also, though, did do more, and I think I've got it on here. Like where a business donated $2,000, like with gift cards. So for some of our families where they were really needing even meals on those previous years, we're like winter break, those long breaks. They feel like they could be okay on a Saturday or Sunday, but when they have their families home for a week or for spring break, and those meals would be calculated, where now, they're not calculated necessarily as meals. We are having some donors who are providing actual giant cards. So they can buy what they need for their children over that break instead of us just saying, here, this is what we're going to give you. And we do have also two partners, and one has been Clarion Dawn's, has been very, very supportive of this program. And that's been, I think, the last two years, they've been huge contributors. And then we have another business owner that donates financially. And then this is our summer school program. Last year, we just reported early, I could probably go back and find that actual number for the end of summer. And again, huge meals in the summer, these are all of our kids who are with us in the summer.
Yeah, if you could do some more digging on the, on the weekend meals, it just, it does look very, very odd. And I understand, you know, you may take the $2,000 and that equals a certain number of meals, and then you add Clarion Dawn's and then the others. It may not be that big a difference, but I look at that and it really makes me wonder if, you know, people are moving out because they can't afford to be here or there's something where less people are aware of it or there's something where they don't want to apply for it or ask for it. It just, it just doesn't seem right. So if you could do some digging, I'd very much appreciate it.
But the school board's been really proud of this program, it's been really helpful for our families. So very appreciative and lots of support, again, in the community for it. Where'd I go up here? Right there, thank you. I really can't see just barely. Tracking our data for Summer Academy, again, this is looking at, we definitely have reported on the high school end, probably more than elementary. But trying to make sure that those programs are more robust. We've done a great job at middle school, second year in middle school, actually, where we have really kind of amped up, where it's more career-focused. Dr. Dipold has ran that for us, so this is the second summer. And just does phenomenal work with our kids and really keeps them motivated. Fantastic work there. Technology Support, Access and Equity, our high school's in the middle of their rollout right now. And if you haven't attended one of those, it's good just to go and listen. And it's a reminder for the school board why we do what we do in high school. And when you listen, Matt, as our new principal, speaks about, you know, the why and why we really are focused on personalized learning and how important equity is. And our staff feel like having the same device for all children levels, the playing field. And it also helps our teachers. Because when they have 24 students who show up in their classroom, they know what they have to utilize as far as teaching. On small classes, we've been able to maintain less than that 120 in course load for secondary. Because you don't go by class size, because you can have one class that spikes and then have the others that are low. Elementary, we've been able to maintain 22 in K2 and 24 and other grades. I will say, I think this one next year will probably be in yellow if it's, which I'm sure it will be on here again, unless the board comes back and makes adjustments to class size because we're seeing some spikes. I think we'll be okay in secondary this year for that 120. We have about one teacher right now that's over 120, about 125. But what we are going to see are some bigger sections. Today, we were looking at, what was the largest section today, 35? It was 35. So we are going to have some spikes. We're watching kindergarten right now is over in class size. Second grade was running very close. Fifth grade, we already added one teacher, they're back to 23, 24 in a class. Policy's 24, so they very well could be over by the time school starts. And we did add, again, a position at fifth grade and a position at kindergarten for next year. But, so we'll see if we can, that one can hold true. Can you?
At first grade.
First, oh yeah, first grade was actually running, we did move our kindergarten, a kindergarten section to first grade to help bring first grade down. So, and that was made by decision because first grade has a halftime person assisting in the room and kindergarten has full-time, so.
So how does that play into the contingency and staff? Have we burned through that or are we still in the realm of having some play in terms of staffing?
Yeah, I was just working on contingency issue today. We still have our contingency, which is at that 150, I think, 150. But I'm going to have about a $45,000, $50,000 request for the school board next week, which is for bus cameras that we feel like are crucial for us, that are going to need to come out of contingency. And I'll fill the board in more on that next week, that request will be there, but there's really nowhere else to take it. The other thing is, you know, when you've got pressure points in different places, do you wipe out your contingency when it doesn't really solve a huge problem? And we don't have 30, you know, if we had 30 in a class, but right now, we're seeing 23s, 24s, very manageable numbers. Doesn't mean that they're going to be within policy all year. But I think that the contingency, the need is going to be greater in other areas.
But in terms of staff, that's not going to bust the contingency, at least as far as you can tell now.
If we, well, the contingency I'll have to bring to the school board if I was going to access it. And I'm not planning, unless something radically happens in this next week, I'm not going to bring a request to the school board to add another teacher.
Because, I mean, you know, the shorthand is a teacher and a para.
Mm-hmm, would wipe it out.
Right.
Yeah.
We're not, are we seeing that teacher and para scenario coming down the pike?
As of today, no, but it doesn't mean we're going to stay within our policy. So I guess what I'm saying is, let's say at kindergarten, we are at 24 students, we'd like to be at 22. But do I feel like I need to, I would ask the school board to wipe out our contingency? When I know that we're at 24 and we have a full-time assistant? I would, I wouldn't ask the school board to add a teacher on that particular grade level because I think it's very doable. And we knew we were going to have class size spikes, I mean, that's, you know, part of it. But if we use 50,000 of our contingency, we would already be short having a para. So we'd have 100,000 left where you could hire a teacher from that. But I just feel like we've got other issues, even legal issues, that we're going to need that 100,000 contingency for. And especially when you think the sewage piping issue at MEH. And if you remember, I updated the school board about that at our last meeting. I think that's 60-odd thousand that insurance denied.
So, not to go on too far of a frolick and detour here, but with respect to growth numbers, you're looking at 4.6 for this year, more or less. Projection was?
You know, percentage was, I don't want to say percentage because I don't have it off the top of my head. I can tell you, we're about 60 students over projection.
I thought we were like three.
It was like two, something, 2.8 or something.
Yeah, I want to say, I want to say it's around three, but I would want to calculate that or just below. But we're about 60 students over what was projected right now.
So I guess some of this is just laying the groundwork for where we are and where we're going to be. We had more students show up than we thought. We're also at the firewall for class size such that an incremental student is going to keep bumping us more and more up against policy. So we could have, don't know yet, pretty substantial staff needs because of the stair-step kind of nature.
Yes. Oh, absolutely, we were in that discussion today. FY '18, we're going to be in critical decision point where you're either going to add staff or you're changing your class size policy, or you're just breaking your own policy.
Okay, well, I would, please keep us posted on how that's breaking because that's going to be a very important piece of the discussion with the community. And I think having that sooner rather than later is important.
Yeah.
So I'm sorry, keep going.
No, no, no. On community engagement, again, that was hosting school tour opportunities using the news press. And we did those especially well on the visioning, I think that's one reason we had probably better turnouts more than just morning announcements, is having those big half-page ads in there where people would see them. Utilizing survey data again to help set the budget and know kind of, you know, what was important. And probably the question that stood out to me this year is when we asked about the tax increase. And it was 25, 25, 25, 25, where literally the community was split. I thought that was an interesting question. Using the website and search engine optimization, again, John's been working really hard on all of our website. And we'll be rolling out some, a new site, I guess I, the way I would say it, here shortly. Focusing on student engagement and again, getting the kids involved. You know, how can we even more effectively use our school board liaison student, our student member? And then specific community outreach, I think the wellness committee is something we're excited about, actually. I think it's kind of given new life to a committee that has a lot of really important work for us right now that even with mindfulness, I know you guys saw that presentation, but really kind of that health and wellness is something we need to focus on. We did not survey our parents at the end of 2016 and the decision there was we were over-surveyed because we really needed to do our teachers as well. But we had done, our parents had done the climate surveys at TJ, they had done it at MEH, and they did it at George Mason. And then on top of that, our staff had taken that survey, plus they took the, is it the PBIS survey, climate survey? And then we had the regular TELL survey, so we're doing that in the fall. And Steve Knight's going to be leading on our tech advisory for us on that whole committee structure this year. Responsible Fiscal Management to define and maintain the school board process for setting an annual priority and staff work plan. This is something that's on really the list for us to talk about now. Is, do you want to put that, you know, is it a bylaw kind of thing? Is it, that just kind of commits to doing it on an annual basis? And that's something the board. to doing it on an annual basis? And that's something the board had in here last year because we felt like we needed memorialize this process. That it just doesn't really show up anywhere. We just do it. And then the financial automation upgrades, we have our time cards. That's something that we're, we have implemented right now, but we've been piloting with smaller departments. We want to go bigger this year with that. And again, that's just efficiency. Automated pay, we actually completed, and that's worked out really well for us. Purchase, purchase cards, that's something we've had to work closely with the city on. It's still in, in progress, but we're thinking that we may not be able to actually do purchase cards. So we're looking at a different system. And then our PO system, trying to get things automated there. And reviewing our central office staffing. We said we need more help. We had it in the budget and it got out. So, but that's as much as we can really do as far as being able to say, we know we need more staff. We just have.
So should it be yellow?
Probably. I mean, I, I just said, you know, review. Well, we've reviewed it, but we haven't acquired it. So I guess we could acquire there this year. Collaboration with City Council Planning Commission to improve the effectiveness of budgeting. This one is to evaluate and determine the best course of action for a revenue model. I put it in blue because we, it's like it's been on here for five years and I think we've determined that it's not going to happen. And maybe that's wrong.
So we should just make it in yellow.
So I don't know why we put it in here, just because it doesn't work in Falls Church. I mean, we've had different city council, we've had different school board. All seven members are now different than what we had the first time I looked at this in 2011 and 12. Yet city manager and the school board superintendent have been the same. And we have not been able to find what works for city council and also the school board. And it doesn't mean that we can't get better at the process. And I think we're actually doing that through even the budget and finance committee. I think there's more coordination now, getting ready for like even this next year's budget. So.
Maybe we need a, a different color, like red, which means something that we have to do year after year and that never, never goes away.
Yeah. And, and that is one of those. And I remember saying that when we put it in here last year, because I don't really, I just, I just can't see it happening for us. And then this was just all the acronyms. So that's kind of an update on where we were. We've done really well this year accomplishing what we, what we wanted to and what we set out to do. So the next thing for the school board is really going to be going back and looking at, looking at these priorities. And I don't know if you want to, I don't know what time it is, but.
8:38.
So we're on time still.
Yes.
If, if there's any direction that you have about, you know, the format as we get ready to go into this, which will show up on a work session in the next couple of weeks. Because we have to have a work plan to start the year. And we're not going to have it before September the 6th. But.
So what, what is the, what is the process for doing this in the timeline?
We will send this back out to all of the school board.
Okay.
People will weigh in, kind of have comments. So that by the time we have a work session, people have been able to think about it. You know, when you're talking about the school board priorities, are those the priorities? You know, or even the broad categories? Is there something that's missing? You know, a prime example would be a, a couple of years ago when we added, I'm trying to think, a responsible fiscal management. If you go back and look 2012, I think that's the one that wasn't in there. Even though we did it, we wanted more of a focus on it for the budget. So there may be a broad category that's not on here that this school board feels like is really important. And what under these categories, if these are staying, what, what do we want to see? What's important to the school board?
Okay, so we're not talking about it tonight?
We can. And if you've gone, I mean, that's, it was all a timing thing. I didn't know if we would get to it or not. So definitely, we could take feedback on it tonight if people have looked at it and thought about it.
I looked at it. I mean, I didn't give it a lot of thought, though. I'd rather spend time thinking about it.
Question, comments?
Yeah.
That's generally what we do. So you guys can kind of sit at home and then, and then we'll start a rough draft, like that we're all kind of contributing, you guys are contributing on. And we'll try to update and come to consensus on, you know, what you really want to be in it. It looks really messy usually when we start doing that, lots of strikes and.
But I think, you know, this is, the, the, the challenge here is that no matter how good a job we did last year, this year, there's a new group of students with a new set of needs that needs to learn what they need to learn. And so there's some stuff that every year you have to do again. There's some things where you make progress and that progress is permanent. So you can take it off the list. And there's some things that are new that you have to start thinking about them because they haven't been issued before. So I, I would kind of look at it in those three buckets. There's some stuff that you just have to do day in and day out. There's some stuff that, you know, we can check the box, like build the high school, we can take that off, off the list. And there are some new things. I don't know whether they're technology related. I don't know whether they're, you know, what, what have you. But, you know, what are the things that are coming down the pike that we need to be thinking about and tackling? So if you, I think if you look at it with those three buckets, you know, some of the things like enduring small classes, excellent staff, those aren't going away. Maybe there are different ways that you can keep classes small. There are different ways that you can keep staff happy. There are different ways that you can keep schools modern and secure. So anyway, I think, I would just go back and look at it in that light.
Could you repeat these three buckets?
Uh, I forgot it now.
Okay, have repeats, new.
No, I would say, there's the stuff that you gotta do every year.
Yeah, they're repeating.
There's the stuff that we've done that's permanent. We can take it off the list.
Oh, okay.
And there's stuff that's coming at us that we've never thought about.
Accomplishing.
And that we need to think about. You know, one of the things that I think is, and I guess there's maybe another thing that's kind of housekeeping. You know, our policies, I know we have a cycle for keeping our policies fresh. But, you know, sometimes I don't know that we get through our policies as fast as we'd like to. So, you know, maybe there are certain policies that aren't on the rotation that we need to accelerate. If so, let's hear about it. And if I, maybe there are other buckets that I've missed and I'm happy to hear about them. But that's, that's kind of how I look at it. But, you know, in some ways in the school system, every day is Monday, right? You, you just have to get up and do it again. So.
Good, good point.
So I'll send this, this out for comments, for people to ponder and get comments on? And I can't remember if this is on next week or the week after, but I'll have to look at that. But we're trying to get it on quickly so that we can be doing this work to be able to know what we're doing for the school year.
Right. We, we need to, we need to get this wrapped up so that we can.
We have a deadline for, you want this by before next meeting or?
I will send it out to you and, and probably give you a timeline like before the next meeting so that we can get feedback.
Yeah, I just need some time to contemplate it and sit down and work with it.
The other thing that we have, just because the school board did the self-evaluation, Marty did take all of that and put it in Survey Monkey for us. And so it's,
Some help.
It's all automated now.
Thank you.
So that we can print the graphs and everything. It's really easy now and it won't be any work for anybody. And going forward, assuming the school board likes this tool, it's there. So you won't have to recreate and it'll just send the link out and people can take it. So, and we were almost complete, I think, by this afternoon. So.
Yeah, my only comment on this is that what I kept marking was any place where it said measure. For example, down under community engagement, sustained measurably high levels of communication. I just wrote how, because I can't remember how we do it. You don't have to answer right now, but
Yeah.
That's something that I've got throughout there. Anytime it says measurable, my first thought was, okay, exactly how.
Yeah. And that's where in the work plan, we try to spell it out a little bit. And I think it's a section where, you know, having four ads in the Falls Church News Press to be able to generate a broader audience. You know, having the large-scale community visioning and how many people actually attended and, which we did those things this year, but would look different next year.
Right.
So it's, a lot of the measurables actually show up in the work, in the work plan.
Right.
Yeah. And it's really hard actually when I go through the work plan, because you can provide something measurable on almost every one of those 60-some-odd things. So if there's something that you see on the work plan or in a priority and you're wondering what we, what, what do we have or data on it, just ask and I can pull it.
Other thoughts, questions? Let's go.
I'm going to beat a dead horse here. On community engagement, we have the run for the schools coming up on the 18th. And I'd like to encourage all of you to participate. You can walk. There is a one-mile walk option. And the city council has reached out to us in a show of support. They support the schools. They're going to make a team and they're all going to do it. And all the city staff is going to do it too. And it'd be nice if we all did it as well. If you are in town and available, can walk one mile. I am going to run 18 miles the day before and run five miles before I get there that day. So I will be very tired. You can run with me slowly.
You haven't seen me run.
Little do it all.
And if you would like to, I have no choice. But if you would like to, you can let me know. And it'd be a great way to get on the community. You can, a shirt for $10 that a local GM graduate, who is my neighbor, is going to make for us with your name on the back. So everyone knows, just go Castillo. So let me know by, by tomorrow as soon as possible. Thanks.
There's some, somebody in the community who could donate knee scoping, that would be.
You can walk.
That would advance.
If you can walk a mile, you can complete the Falls Church Education Foundation run for the schools.
Okay.
You don't have to run. And you can also be the photographer at the finish line and tweet things.
Oh, it's a rule for all.
Hint, hint. I have my nickname on that.
Or anything else. Right, then thank you very much. Have a good evening and we'll see you again soon.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.